Yeah, your pledge. Good evening. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman Jim Jolly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And right now, we do have, we are going to acknowledge and give accommodation. Now, I'm going to hand the floor over to Councilman Buzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, small businesses are a strength in our community, and we are lucky to have many wonderful small businesses in Livonia. Entrepreneurship is hard, and I think it's important to shine a light of appreciation on those who take on the challenge and make our city better. Tonight, I want to recognize Stu Solomon for 21 years of ownership of Van Ness and Sons at Five Mile between Middlebelt and Inxter. He's handing the business owner over to a new couple, so we'll still have a great small business here in Livonia. But for decades, he set a very high bar of service that's well-known for its integrity, stellar customer service, and dependability. A personal note of just how, I literally have been a customer the entire time, from when I was 16-years-old and my mom would go until now and continuing to be so. My car got stuck on the loop in Ann Arbor when I was in college, and it got towed by AAA to a service mechanic out in Ann Arbor. And it was literally cheaper to have it taken to Van Ness and pay for that tow service than it was to have it serviced somewhere else. So, I just think that, you know, and again, they took it immediately. Their calendar, if you call, is always booked, but they find a way to make it work. They're the nicest people in the world, and I just, I want to thank Stu, sorry, Stu and his wife for all that they've done for our community over the years. Thousands and thousands of customers here in Livonia, I know, will be, you know, we'll miss the Van Ness sign, but we're glad that we're not losing your friendly faces and happy to have you here tonight. So, come on, come on down.
And while Stu's making it up, I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Jolly, and then I have some fun things to say as well, if anybody else on council.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I had a chance to talk to Stu here just for a couple minutes, a couple minutes ago. And I think the important thing is, we've all been in that situation where we didn't know what was going on, right? And sometimes, when you don't know what's going on, you go to the library or you go online to look for answers. And Stu ran his own form of the library where people showed up with problems and not knowing what was going on and always received answers. And I mean, honestly, I've been in that position several times over the years, and I've, you know, gone there not knowing and also being afraid and all kinds of things of what might be going on. And, you know, it was always a pleasure to be able to recommend your place as somewhere that was honest and forthright and that was going to get the job done. So, you know, I wish you the best earlier. I wish you the best, and we appreciate everything over the years.
Thank you very much. Stu, I have a funny story, and if you remember me, so, between my wife and my, between me and my wife's, when we were growing up in high school, I think we, I had my sunbird through ya, but I ended up, we ended up buying our house in 2009, and it came with an 88 Plymouth Horizon with 20,000 miles on it. And everybody doesn't know what a Plymouth Horizon is, is a little micro machine car. And at that time, I was driving from Sixon Farmington all the way out to Mount Clemens, right? And I remember, I took it up to Stu and I said, "Stu, I just, I just wanted to make sure I get home and back every day." But it was funny. I mean, even through high school and everything, Stu was the place to be. And it was honesty, it was integrity, and everything that you've always done. And I bet people in this room had those same experiences. So, we wish you the best on this new and never. And if anybody else on council has anything else to say, if not, we're going to hand it over to you if you want some words, and then we'll get a nice picture and hand you a nice...
Yes, I would. First, I want to thank the council for honoring me tonight. It really means a lot. I never asked for anything, but this is really a wonderful situation. It means a lot to my wife and I. And I also want to thank my wife, Michelle. Behind the scenes, she keeps me going. She does a lot of paperwork, making sure I'm doing this correctly. I am not a paperwork person. I, I work on the cars. I, I talk to the customers. And I also want to thank my employees that stuck with me because without them, I wouldn't have what I had. They, they were just a fantastic team. They're still with me, even though there's a new owner. And again, I see a lot of faces here. I probably worked on your car. People in the audience, I recognize some faces. I may not know your name, but I can probably tell you what kind of car you drive. You know, Michelle and I have lived in Livonia now 30 years. We shop, we go to dinner, we go everywhere in Livonia. I see my customers everywhere. And one reason I wanted to stay on as an employee was I didn't want to leave my customers. They mean a lot to me. I built up a lot of trust, and I'm trying to, you know, keep that going with a new owner. And I think we'll, we'll get there. A lot of little changes. I get it. I'm old-school what I do. A lot of new technology is coming through, and it's hard for me to get used to. But I'm, I'm very happy, and I think this is the right time for me to retire, not fully, but I didn't want to wait too long, and it's better to do it now than wait too late. So, other than that, again, thank you so much for everything tonight.
No problem. And with that, if everybody, let's give them a huge round of applause. All right. All right. So, let's get into it. Welcome to the 2001st regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, October 7, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show all seven members of council present. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of City Council that was held on September 9th. Counsel?
So moved.
Second. Got them both? All right. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy? President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry. We're going to move on to audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, you guys are all lined up. Name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Newton. My friends call me Rosina. I live at 15450 Oporto Street. City Council members and members of the audience, thank you for this opportunity to share with you this evening. I want to give you a little background of my background and my experience and subject matter first, and then I'll share why I'm here. I have a horticulture degree from Texas A&amp;M University, and I've been in the horticulture field for 40 years. When I first started, all you could find in the nurseries were begonias and boxwoods, right? And over the decades, gardeners have become more aware of native plants and ecological gardening, for example, butterfly gardening. People increasingly want to create something beautiful in their own yard that is also beneficial for our shared environment. Every action we take in our yards makes a difference. So, Livonia has been very wise in this respect. Livonia has hosted native plant sales and lectures at the city library on sustainable landscaping practices. However, gardeners across the country, including Livonia, who want to plant beautiful native ecological gardens in their own yards, are bumping up against archaic city ordinances or HOA codes that do not recognize the difference between native plants and noxious weeds. I'm here this evening to ask City Council to take into consideration our Livonia residents like Annie Sarrazin, Bob Hauser, and myself, who want to plant butterfly gardens and native landscapes without the threat of citations from the inspection department. We definitely need to keep the noxious weed ordinance because no one wants the seeds of Canadian thistle to blow over into their yards and grow so that you cannot walk barefoot in the lawn anymore. Ask me how I know this. So, I am requesting that the City Council kindly, number one, refer my concerns to the mayor's office and/or refer to the administration to look into my concerns, or, number three, refer my concerns to be heard in a separate committee and/or, number four, consider forming a committee to discuss ordinance reforms. In addition, I request that the city of Livonia adopt the well-researched and updated list of noxious weeds as published by the state of Michigan. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Good evening. Sir, name and address?
Hi, how do you do? My name is David Waxer, and I'm at 15450 Oporto Street, and I've been a Livonia resident and homeowner for about six and a half years. And I'm here also to talk about the beneficial role of native plants in our community and also as advocate for my neighbor across the street, Annie Sarrazin, who's across the street. She's been cited for quote-unquote "noxious weeds" and "overgrowth." I just, one of the points I wanted to make is that I live across the street from her. It's virtually invisible. She has like a one-and-a-half acre lot. This area is about two-thirds of an acre. As the previous person spoke, I, I think that the noxious weed ordinance is really beneficial. But the situation that we're talking about here is not about noxious weeds. It's not about overgrowth. What we're really talking about is that my neighbor has a wetland meadow. And she has tried for years to maintain that meadow portion of her property as a lawn. Like I said, it's two-thirds of an acre. It regularly floods. It overflows, overflows next door. The neighbor then has to deal with it when there's a big rain. She's tried to keep it as a lawn in order to mow, but then the mower gets stuck in the wet mud because of the particular terrain that she's got. She's tried numerous situations to maintain a lawn there, but it hasn't worked. And so, she planted a native plant garden. By definition, these are not weeds, they're not noxious weeds, they're not just, you know, chaotic overgrowth. She actually hired a landscaping company specializing in planting of native plants. So, what she has are, is an intentionally planted wetland garden that falls under the category, a new term I learned, of green stormwater infrastructure. Doesn't flood, neighbors are happier, and it's a, it's a beautiful garden of native plants. So, I'm also advocating for the different actions that you might be able to take, reviewing the citation, which, because I do not believe that her garden falls under the province of that ordinance because it's an intentionally planted beautiful meadow that solves an overflooding problem. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
How you doing?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Cindy Ross. I'm at 19950 Milburn Street. So, I am a resident of Livonia, but I'm also the restoration manager for Friends of the Rouge. And I would like to respectfully request that Livonia refer our concerns of the outdated noxious weed ordinance to the mayor's office and/or consider forming a committee to discuss ordinance reform. Friends of the Rouge has worked with the city of Livonia and other municipalities in the Rouge watershed to promote sustainable landscaping, to improve water quality for decades, in which Livonia has been a tremendous partner. Native plants play a critical role in restoring natural processes that provide vital services to our community free of charge. The services include managing stormwater, filtering pollutants, and other sediment from rainwater runoff, reducing our urban heat island effect. So, in these warm months, we really do need to, planting, plants larger than lawn do help cool the earth, the surface of the earth. And also, they provide critical habitat for pollinators such as bees, butterflies, and beneficial insects. There are some misconceptions about native landscapes. One is that they breed mosquitoes. Not only is this really not true, but the plants also help to restore functioning ecosystems. Dragonflies are another beneficial insect that is attracted to these native landscapes, and just one dragonfly can eat hundreds of mosquitoes a day. So, our work, our work to educate and evolve the community regarding the benefits of native plants and their role in managing stormwater to support, also helps to support the city of Livonia municipal separate storm sewer system permit, the MS4 permit with the state of Michigan. And these actions, there are actions within this permit that Livonia must take, including encouraging its residents to create native plant gardens, to manage rainwater, keeping rainwater out of the storm system. So, Ms. Sarrazin is doing us a service, and I would not only like to see her native plant meadow remain intact, but I would like to see more of these throughout our community. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I am Annie Sarrazin of 15509 Oporto. I am the one who has fallen afoul of these ordinances. When we moved there 14-years ago, we couldn't grow grass. We tried. I had dethatchers, reseeders, graders. I put in river birch. Nothing stopped the water from encroaching on everything. I couldn't grow grass. My mower would get stuck. So, it really was Spartan weeds at best. So, I attended a lecture at the Livonia Speaker Series, and my attention was drawn to a meadow, a professional meadow installer named Drew Lathan of growing greener, growing sustainable landscapes. He, after much money, cost thousands of dollars to have it professionally installed, he installed it for me, and it's been working like a charm. It doesn't look like your traditional garden, like the, the other two-thirds of my property do. You can see that I really, truly care about what I do. This garden, this property is, is a full-time job, and I'm willing to take it on, but I cannot do it with ordinance people attacking me all the time for something that they are unaware of the purpose of. So, there's just, there's no way to grow grass there. My particular meadow, my neighbor told me, behind me, said, "The water no longer encroaches on her she shed." My neighbor to the right of me says it absorbs the water so that he doesn't have to use his French drain as often. So, it's, it's serving its purpose. Not only that, it's beneficial in its pollinators. I've never seen so many bees, butterflies, birds, finches, everybody. They all eat this meadow, not the deer, which is another problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you?
Real good. Thank you. I was here almost a year ago, speaking about a native plant ordinance, and I think raising chickens within the city limits took the night that night. So...
Well, the floor is yours.
As you notice, tonight, there is some additional support for native plants.
Can we get your name and...
Oh, pardon me. My name is Bob Hauser. I live at 14792 Hubbard. I, my family's been a Livonia resident for 37 years, and I've been into native plants and sustainable landscaping for probably 14 years. Before that, I was your dyed-in-the-wool turf lawn, Scots for baby type of person. But I'm here tonight in support of Ann's meadow. I was out there last week. I walked the whole meadow, and there was absolutely not a noxious weed as specified in Livonia's weed, noxious weed ordinance. In fact, her whole property in its entirety could probably be on next year's Livonia's Garden Walk. She has a fantastic property. She's done wonders with showcasing native plants in different plots around, around the property. Also, I'd like to mention that I am a member, well, I'm a member of the local chapter of Wild Ones, the Wayne County Wild Ones. Wild Ones is a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates the use of native plants and sustainable landscape. And we run programs, education. We work with local people to establish native plants in things like rain gardens, demonstration gardens, people's residence. We're really pushing establishing sustainable landscapes in people's residence and thereby reducing their lawn. A lot of people before me, you know, stole my thunder and, you know, established all the talking points of what native plants and sustainable landscaping can do. In my house, I haven't watered the yard in three years. No, I don't fertilize. I don't do anything with mulch, so there's no runoff from my yard at all going into the sewers and the creeks and Rouge River. That's one of the big benefits of native plants and sustainable landscaping. Another one would be that I don't know if anybody's been troubled by mosquitoes this year, but we've been outside, and there's been no mosquitoes. I would think that my yard now is doing what it was designed to do, what I designed it to do, and it's established a balance where things are eating, things are not...
Sir, that's time. That's your three minutes. But thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I would just, I would like the council here to just publicly point me to someone I could work with to establish...
Absolutely. Hundred percent. I appreciate you guys being here. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Evan Rosen. Address 28916 Willow Creek. I'm also here on behalf of Annie's Meadow. I echo the sentiments that have already been shared. I'll just briefly add a couple of things. One of the issues with native plant landscaping that neighbors have that aren't necessarily aware of the whole thing is that it can often, it can look less regulated and sort of, sort of less tidy. It's certainly less tidy than a monoculture of turf grass. And, you know, just again, Kentucky bluegrass is not native. It has about the same ecological benefit as pavement, that is to say, none. But, you know, there are certain things that can be done, and Annie actually has done them, to indicate to people that this is an intentional planting. People who aren't familiar with native plants who might look at a field that's nothing but invasive and go, "Oh, how beautiful that is," you know, and might look at a very vibrant, diverse field of native plants and go, "That looks unkempt and messy." One of the things you can do, which Annie has done, is create a sort of a turf grass mowed perimeter around the planting that signals to people this is intentionally done. This is not just a random field of weeds. So, those are called cues for care, and we always encourage people to do that. Not, we're not really in favor of things like no-mow November, right? Because that perpetuates this idea of native plant gardeners just want to have a messy field of nothing, right? And people are used to these foundation plantings with non-native cultivars where you have a plant and then six feet of mulch, and then another plant, and then six feet of mulch. Me personally, aesthetically, I think the visual interest of a really dense, diverse planting that keeps actual invasive species out is extremely important, and that's why I would recommend, you know, the ordinance officers that go by to ticket people, they should be able to tell what a native plant is and what a non-native plant is, right? I go look at Annie's Meadow. I can tell in five seconds, these are native plants. And I can tell you which they are, and I can tell you she's got multiple season interest. She's going to have blooms spring through winter. But if the ordinance officer is coming out, doesn't know what he's looking at, just slaps a ticket, you know, that's an issue. So, thank you. Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening. How are you?
I'll know in a couple minutes. Christopher Martin, I'm a resident of the great state of Michigan. I'd just like to make a comment here on the people that stood up here. Well-spoken. They had an issue that they wanted to get across to you. And people out in TV land, you should do that more often. Don't just sit around thinking that there's no solution to a problem. These people are supposed to work for you. The magnificent seven are supposed to work for you. And some do and some don't. But basically, I just want to talk about, it was on the news, and I realize that across the street would be more appropriate, but here, I'm reaching more people. So, the school bus drivers, the shortage of them, it's pathetic. A friend of mine actually put in for that job. He would have been great at it, okay? A teacher, a coach, good driving record, and a friend of mine. So, but evidently, he was skipped over for some apparent reason. I don't really know why that might, might be. But another thing that does take place also is other school districts, especially those that are up north, administration steps in when a driver is sick or whatever. There's no stopping of a bus as far as the route or anything else. They go pick up little Johnny. They're out in the middle of Nowheresville up north, and they pick up that child and take him to school. So, evidently, they've spent the entire summer over there and waited for a crisis. Now the school started, "Oh, we don't have enough." It just doesn't make sense. But I just thought I'd mention that out there to people. If you have a problem, do come here, and at times, just don't ask randomly. You might have to assign somebody your task that you want them to do, okay? Because that's where your tax dollar goes to pay their wages. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there any more communicat... Oh, Mr. King, right on, right on cue. How are you?
Good. Taking Christmas words to heart. I'm coming forward. I wonder why everybody was here tonight. Now, I know we're talking about the birds and the bees, so, yeah. Big crowd. All right. Very quickly, I was serving on the school board. Let me just tell you a quick story. We, curriculum director comes forward, we're purchasing textbooks. Martha knows all about this. Go through a lot of textbooks, so $300,000 worth of textbook. Shipping charge is 10%. So, I'm sitting at the board and do the math. That's $30,000 for shipping charges. That seemed just ridiculously outrageous to me. So, I asked the question, "Where are these coming from?" I mean, $30,000, they come from California? And I offered to go get them. A friend of mine had a big rig every week going coast to coast. I said, "I'll pick them up and bring them back." She said to me, "No one has ever asked that question." Next meeting comes back. Mr. King followed up on your inquiry. Those books are coming from Ohio, and they're going to charge us $2,000. So, at the time, we had a newspaper, and we had a reporter that covered every school board meeting. We had a reporter that covered every council meeting, and that is sorely missed today. So, it came out in the paper. Kudos to Mr. King for the $28,000 question. So, why do I tell you this? Because I watch these meetings that are home or in the audience, week after week after week. We do what we always do. People come to the dais, put all the stuff forward, and just money, thousands and thousands of dollars. So, I'm hearing rumblings in the, in the community about possible millage increase, tax increases. And I have always believed, it's not how much money you have, it's what you do with the money you have. That one question, save $28,000, but going... That one question, save $28,000, but going forward, we were never overpaid for shipping charges again. So I'm, I'm pleading with someone on this council to start digging into the culture of doing what we always do, spending what we always spend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening, Mr. Barronhouse. I feel like I know everybody. You can give your introductions.
Well, good evening, everyone. Jim Barronhouse, 37195 Waymouth. I'm also the chairperson for the Green Leaf Commission on Sustainability, and just wanted to take a moment and give you a brief update on the excellent presentations on native plants in Livonia. This is really a very positive growing trend in our community. It's present, a lot of our residents have embraced this concept. These gardens in front of their homes, again, are used for water control, stormwater control, and they're very well executed, but there were some key points. You do have to identify them to the neighbors, there are signage available, there's certifications available that identify that piece of property as a rain garden. Also, on a larger scale, Arucio Construction was a Green Leaf Award recipient a few years ago for their, and they were recognized nationally for their work on their pollinator garden at their corporate headquarters, and they've used this as a team, a team-building exercise as well. So what we're going to do is, Mr. Hauser's been in contact with us and actually attended our last Green Leaf Commission meeting. We're going to be inviting him back to our November Green Leaf Commission meeting, learn more about this, and look at making recommendations on how to address and how to grow these native gardens in the city of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barronhouse. Any more communication from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to council communication. And before I, I'm just going to just touch base if I may, and then I'm going to hand it over to my colleagues. Just really quick about the native, the native ordinance. Someone brought up Drew Lathan. I worked for the city of Novi and worked directly with Drew on a project at ITC Park. And it was the first net zero building where the park operations is, and we had, we were retaining so much stormwater, it wasn't even funny. And it was crazy, we, the component, and I think you all will appreciate it, is education. Because milkweeds and all this other stuff, listen, I love plants, I love sustainability. You guys are the subject matter experts. I just love the, the process, knowing that, you know, in theory, some of these milkweeds are straws and are, are keeping water out of our drains and our storm system. And even when I worked at Habitat for Humanity, we did the first lead platinum house, and it had eight rain barrels and had two rain gardens. And we had a single mother that had no idea what a rain garden or a rain barrel did or was, and we wanted to get the points, but one of the biggest components was education. And it's funny, to this day, that house was constructed in 2011, and you drive by it today, and it are still blossoming. I was so worried that, because a lot of people, you see it, they'll chop them right down, and it negates everything you guys have done. Drew, if everybody knows Drew, he is the subject matter expert, and I think he moved down south, but he keeps coming back and forth, but that guy has more energy than I do even on Red Bull, and just being able to present things is welcoming. But I just, before I hand it over, I wanted to thank you guys all for coming up. It's a matter of seeing what we can do, and thanks for bringing it to us. I'll hand it over to Councilman Jolly, then I'm going to go to the Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. There's a couple of things that I wanted to say here. We have ordinances that are written on the books, but obviously, there is always some degree of interpretation in regards to what the facts are, right? And that's really the role of the prosecutor in our society, to get that feedback and make educated judgments before, you know, you really get into a courtroom, right? So I'm hoping that there's an opportunity to do that. This isn't really the place to talk about that, though, right? And I have full faith and confidence in our law off-, well, our city attorney's office, the law department here at City Hall, that we do have people capable and accustomed to making those decisions and putting facts where facts belong and applying them to the law appropriately. But I, I do think that we see this more often in the city. There's a notable residence right off of Newburgh Road, between Five Mile and Six Mile Road, right on, on the corner there. So there is a precedent of this happening in the city, and I think it's, it's probably appropriate that we have our ducks in a row in regards to how these things are treated. So I will do as requested, and I'll offer this for the, let's see.
I was going to say law and education.
Law and education, because I think it's probably appropriate both ways, right? So I'll offer this as a subject matter in law and education to be reviewed by the council, and then that's an opportunity for us to speak more informally as well, with the applicable department heads as well. So that's my motion. If I can have support, I'd appreciate it.
Support.
Give it to Vice President. Council, do we have any further commu-, I'm going to hand it over to the Vice President to speak on that as well, and keep it around.
Thank you. I, actually, that's exactly what I was going to do, the same thing, Mr. Jolly.
Great minds, right?
Yeah, exactly. I actually am the Chair of the Law and Education Committee, and I was hoping that Mr. Barronhouse, if you could send me the information on the November Green Leaf meeting, I would love to come and attend as well and be part of that conversation. Really impressed by the residents and your desire to come out tonight and your diligence on, on being prepared. It was, it was very impressive, and this is how local government works, right? This is how things get moving. So I really appreciate your commitment to this, and we'll lean on the Green Leaf Commission to help us as well, and we'll put this in committee, and we'll have some good conversation and look and see, do these ordinances need to be updated, and do we need to educate our officers on this particular matter? And, and that's the best way to do that. Second thing I'd like to address, I know Mr. Martin talked about the school bus issue, and of course, that isn't a council issue, but this Thursday is the Board of Education Forum, and you will have a chance to see the candidates for the Board of Education in action right here, I think it's at 5:30. So that's a great opportunity when you are looking at who to vote for on any kind of race, whether it's school board, council, whatever, that is this week. So just, that's, that's the opportunity that you would have for that. And that's really it. Thank you.
We, we do have a motion support. This is just speaking on the topic. I was seeing if council had any other words.
Just to clarify, we're talking on the motion right now.
Oh, just on the motion, I thought you had moved on.
Yeah, so we're speaking just on the motion right now, but then we'll go back to council communications.
And we'll be taking a vote on that.
Correct.
Great, awesome. Thanks to Councilmember Jim Jolly, I appreciate it, appreciate residents coming out for, coming out tonight. I'm, I'm kind of mixed on this issue, so I'm looking forward to it. I'm happy that this was appropriately placed into a committee so we can have that discussion. You know, I, I have leaned heavily on our ordinance department to enforce more. I don't think we're doing a good enough job enforcing. I think we need to give them more resources. You drive down through Eastside Livonia, and, and so many buildings, and whether they be commercial or residential, are overgrown. Roofs are caving in on buildings, there's old houses that still have not been demoed. And that's no, that's not on our ordinance department director. I think our ordinance department and the director do a really great job. It's like anything, they need more resources, and there needs to be emphasis. But the, the problem here, I think, ends up happening is where ordinance department officers want to go and catch these bad actors that are not taking care of their properties, and they become blighted, whether they be, again, commercial, residential, but then there is some apprehension by them because elected officials get involved. And, and then they say, well, we're not going to go do our job, because if we do, then they're going to go complain to the mayor, go complain to the city council, and our city continues to change. And, and just drive through the Eastside Livonia, I mean, so many buildings are vacant, and they look horrible. Why would you invest money in your community, whether it be a home or whether it be a commercial building, if your neighbors look like a haunted house all the time? With that being said, I don't know enough about the native plants, and, and I'm looking forward to learning more about it. I think a few of the residents made some really great topics about, they may not look like the traditional boxwood, then mulch, then, you know, another plant, but they, they, you can start to see there's a difference between a native garden a-, as opposed to someone that's just not taking care of their lawn, because I have people in my neighborhood that don't take care of their homes, and it's very frustrating when people cut their grass and take care of their homes, and you drive by that one house that's got weeds and garbage cans everywhere, and, and the gutters are falling off, and that will continue to grow. And it's only going to get worse if we, as a community, don't attack that head-on. So I hope the administration steps up their game and gives our ordinance department more resources and more support to make sure we go after those people. But it's important that we don't go after the people that just have nice gardens, they may be different than the traditional garden that we most likely see. So I'll support this motion by Councilman Jim Jolly, and look forward to the chairwoman putting together this meeting and learning more about this. Thanks, Mr. President.
Your Chair.
Yes. The floor is yours.
Thank you. It's, it's great that, you know, folks have come out tonight on this very issue. I was just going to compliment Livonia on all the beauty that people do in their yards here in our city and keep them up. And, you know, I mean, the amount of money people spend on outdoor plants is unbelievable in this community. Just beautiful. And I don't like this time of year, because we're going to pull out all those, you know, geraniums, those gorgeous geraniums. I have one that's going to eighteen blooms on my front porch. And, I mean, it's just, it's just a great community, and I, I hear what my colleagues say, but I, I also remember the COVID episodes, and I also remember that this economy is very tight right now, and there's a lot of factors that go into some of this kind of issue. Not to say we can't, you know, use a little soap and water on things and, and do more than that, I agree, but for the most part, honestly, I think Livonia is a wonderful community, and not just because I've lived here forever, but seriously, and, and with the nuances like Mr. Jolly has put forward with these different species of plants coming in, and how we save ecologically different venues of things, and having Jim Barronhouse kind of leading that charge too with the Sustainability Committee, that's going to be awesome. And I think this administration's been open to so many things that I'm, I'm happy to hear it, and I, I applaud you for coming out. Friends of the Rouge has been here forever and ever and ever. I think the Rouge has got to be clean by now, but I know it's not. And, and like I told the woman in the audience, I went to U of M with Jack Smiley, and he, he was such a strong advocate back a hundred years ago and still is. So thank you for every, everything we do. My colleagues' words are well spoken. Thank you, Mr. Jolly. I just wanted to sum it up and end on a positive note as well about our great city that we have. Lowest taxes, I mean, in Wayne County. I mean, people just envy at our garbage collection. I mean, great place to live.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I know we all agree on that.
Absolutely. Anything else from council on this item? Anything from the audience on sending this to the Law Committee? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the matter is approved, seven to zero. So we will have committee dates. Vice President Tashnik is the Chair, and just keep watching the city's website or follow through with contacting our council office with Sarah, and we'll get you the date. But appreciate all you guys coming out. Anything else from City Council Communications? Councilwoman Bazinski.
Since we have a big audience, I'll, I'll just take the opportunity to mention a couple of upcoming events that are happening. One is the Livonia Women's Connection, which I host with my colleague, Councilwoman Toy. It's a free networking event, open to anyone, really, but particularly women in our community who just want to, you know, find, catch up with old friends, meet new friends. Our next one is Tuesday, October 8th, at 6:00 p.m. at Real Joy Yoga. They're light refreshments, it's very casual, it's from 6:00 to 8:00, so come, bring friends. Also, I host monthly coffee hours on different topics at the Civic Center Library. My next one is Saturday, October 12th, at 11 o'clock. The topic will be about youth safety, and the Livonia Police Department will be coming to do a presentation, but I always do a general city council update and do Q and A for anyone who wants to bring up other topics as well.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Council, Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Quick shout-out to a young, young girl in our community. She is dealing with a form of brain cancer. The Facebook page, I'm just looking up, it's called Rock the Love for Gigi. Rock the Love for Gigi. Gigi is spelled G-I-G-I. And I've always followed her dad and mom on social media, they're pretty active, Joel Wheaton and his wife, and such a cute girl, and, and she's battling this brain tumor, and a lot of people have come out and, and been in support of her. So maybe take a moment, go look up their Facebook page, they're Livonia residents, cute young family, and, and they're just very active in the business world, in the chamber, and, and our community in general. So rock the love for Gigi. Look, look them up, and maybe you can make a small contribution or just show some support on, on social media for them. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything else from council? All right, I do have something. Listen, as a hockey player, I always try, anybody in here might appreciate this, but you always give the 24-hour rule. And unfortunately, I've had till about 4:30 today to kind of chew on some stuff, but, and, and I've, I've got a whole bunch of scribble, but I want to get through it. When I got into the, being on city council and politics in 2019, it was to make my city a better place, and it was make city a better place for all the people that, that live in it and do good. It's a roller coaster. You know, it's one thing to run, it's one thing to serve, and I tell you what, there's not a day that I regret. I love every minute of it. You know, at, at this time, you know, you get the council president, you get to sit here, and you research Robert's rules, and you got the gavel, and you prepare for meetings, and sometimes I think your ego gets in the way of things. But at the end of the day, we represent, you know, a good friend of Rob and I, who's our barber, always would say, he said, hey, you represent the people. And Mr. Martin says that all the time, and we hear that everywhere, and we do work for you. And you know what? Respect goes both ways. And you know what? If people treat me with respect, I'm going to bring it back tenfold. At least for me, and I can speak for colleagues, usually you'll hear me say, hey, I'm one seventh of the vote. We've got a great council, and I appreciate every one of my colleagues. And, you know, I hate to be up here saying we have limitations. We are the legislative branch, and sure, there are means that are outside our control. And I could tell you that everyone on this dais sends complaints and nasty grams and things that are wrong with the city, especially in these days with social media. And we do this behind the scenes. And one of my good friends, Councilman Jolly, has always said, Livonia above self. It's always about our community. We put our community first, and that's true. But I can tell you that behind the scenes, we bring forth every complaint and every issue, and, and we get them every day. We get thousands, thousands a year. And we try our best to go out there and make sure that we do the right for the community and the residents. And I'm not, I, I was prepared today to literally go through a bunch of items on a weekly basis that I go through, that are, that either on Facebook or friends and family reach out, and they have issues, and we share them with administration, because there's a process. I could tell you that right now, the only negative you're going to hear from me is I think there's a lack in that process, and we need to do better. And so going forward, at least right now for council communications, I'm going to report out during this time, which is my time, with complaints and issues that are with, from the citizens and residents. And I'll call it right here on the record, and will demand action. Because right now, I've tried and tried and tried, and I'm hitting a lot of walls. There's a lot of good, I will say that. I'm not here to say it's all negative, but I think that transparency and communication needs to be better, and for me personally, I'm going to do a better job. I promise you that. I signed up for this job, and I want to do better, and I'm sure my colleagues, we got a great council, we got a great administration, so I'm not going to get up here and, and be the, I'm the glass half-full guy, and about an hour ago, I wasn't. And so I take that back. And so going forward, like I said, we're going to have nice cards here with communication. People have issues, I know we already have it, and we always say, hey, contact Sarah. But going forward, I'm going to have something that if people really want to have communication, we're going to make it easier for people to get communication, and we're going to get you your answers. And if we can't do it from here, we're going to ask administration at this forum to come up and explain it. That's all I wanted to touch base on. We've got to do better. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to move on to, we don't have any, oh, and then, thank you, Sarah, we have new data on items number 20 and 18. And I do want to, you know, I doubt he's watching, because it's probably close to 8 o'clock, but our typewriter, Bill Joyner, Friday Musings, today is his 75th birthday, and if you're listening, Bill, happy birthday. With that being said, I'm going to move on to, we don't have any reports from the mayor or any city officials, so I'm going to jump right into the consent agenda. This is items one through 16 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on September 9th and determined to be non-controversial. Council, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Tashnik for the motion, support from Jolly. Any comments from city council? Seeing none, any report, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Jolly. Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And consent agenda passes seven to zero. We're going to jump right into our unfinished business. All right, let me get to that. Oh, we're in, um, committee report outs, right?
Right.
Let me get that. All right, so I, right now, unfinished business, we have items number 17. It's a Senior Citizens Families Environmental Committee meeting that took place on September 4th. Uh, the subject matter of mass transit, the subject matter of Livonia Community Transportation Service, and the subject matter of the transportation issues for seniors, families, and other community residents. And with this, I'm going to hand it over to the wonderful, uh, Councilwoman Laura Toy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, it's indeed an honor to chair this commi- committee with such talented people as, uh, Kerry Bazinski and Scott Morgan, um, and others that were able to attend the meeting at their choice. Um, these are our committee members, the three of us, and we had some, um, concerns, if you will, from some of our community members as it related to, um, transportation. So, in looking at the past and now the present, we, um, pulled up that great topic of mass transportation, um, which is really brave thing to do because everybody has a view on that, and, and that's all well and good. So what we did was, we left that in committee because, um, there was no, there was no real decision on that. We needed to get more information from experts and people in and around our area. Uh, but we did, if, if I may have that motion, uh, looked at Mr. Chair as leaving it in committee. Is that cool?
That's cool with me.
Great, okay. That's an old 60 word anyhow. Uh, and then, item two, uh, C R 7618, subject manner of Livonia Community Transportation Services, kind of coincides with item three, which is, was a subject manner on transportation issues as it related to seniors, families, and other community residents. And briefly, let me give you the notes on both of those. And both of those were left into the, the committee as well for further study because they're ongoing kinds of issues. Um, the issue, and please, my other members on that committee or those of you that were there, please chime in if I'm going in the wrong directions, but, um, there were several questions raised. We did have quite, not quite a few residents, but a number of residents there that, um, really, you know, gave some nice testimony about what they had experienced with transportation. And, um, our housing director, which we're so fortunate to have, uh, Jim Ingles, um, who's come back, yeah, out of retirement, and he, he does a fabulous job, and he has such great history behind him. Um, he gave some explanations as it related to the different, um, programs, buses, uh, transportation issues that we're experiencing. And, uh, he also gave a lot of statistics about data going back to 2019, council members about ridership, et cetera. We have 18 buses, vans, whatever you want to call them, in our community that help people, um, on a daily basis. And, uh, it's $2 there and $2 back, and, um, it's called live and go. And if you're 18 years or older, you can request a pickup, but you want to call because a lot of people, you know, call and need help, et cetera. Three of those buses, unfortunately, are out of service currently, and, you know, they break down, air conditioning breaks, kind of like our own cars. You know how that goes. So anyhow, um, he also explained that we're going to be hiring a new transit manager due to a retirement within there, and, um, to dispatchers as well. Um, staffing for drivers, eh, eh, an issue that was brought up, um, like a year ago, um, and now it's very stable. So, so we were real happy to hear that because that became an issue there for a while, getting drivers. So now that we have the drivers, now what we have to look at is, one of the problems that was identified or concerns, I should say, was, um, when, when the folks are taken to their, uh, medical needs and/or just leisure needs, like going shopping, or, you know, wherever they want to go, within the city limits, um, they, they sometimes don't make it there on time. And, um, with doctors, you know how doctors can get. They don't like to be waiting. They'll keep you waiting, but they don't like to be waiting. And, um, so, you know, we need to tighten up their program a little bit. And one of the suggestions was that perhaps the vans should be dedicated just to the medical needs and not, you know, overall for everything, um, you know, so it's a potpourri of things on that particular vehicle, um, and that driver for that day. So, i- it was very interesting, and both of these kind of, like I said, intermingle. Um, so that's why, you know, we left them into the committee, and there's going to be some training going on, um, you know, about ridership, and customer service was their top priority, is what they identified. And so, you know, to hear some of the kind of yanks and some of the real positive things that were going on, we, you know, we kind of explored, and we, um, are going to get some answers on those, so that's why it's been left, both of these, uh, in the committee. So, um, Mr. Chair, we duly, um, will, uh, provide these minutes at Sarah's, so hard work on, and Kerry worked real hard on, and, um, uh, no further action on either two or three.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Readout.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bazinski?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of, of other points, although, uh, Councilwoman Toy did a, did a great overview of what was discussed in the meeting. But for those of you who don't know, um, Livonia Community Transit Program, which has been servicing, uh, the city for decades, transitioned to live and go earlier this spring. Um, the new program is, um, an app that you can use. Again, it, it extends ridership to those who are over 18, who are, need it for any use within city limits, not strictly medical, um, or work-related, or, eh, that senior, previously with seniors and this di- disabled. Now it's for anyone who needs it for anything. So whether you're going to Target or you're going to work, you can use the program. Ridership has increased significantly since this transition, which is great news. But I think it's something for us to be mindful of because we, um, have to think about capacity building, and how do we grow this program in a way that, um, allows it to provide the services that we need and expect it to. Um, that's something that is on the radar of the Housing Department and the Transit, um, Unit specifically. Uh, it's the, the app and the digital use that's kind of created some of the challenges for getting folks to appointments on time. And, um, again, our department is working directly with the service provider via to make sure that these problems are fixed and addressed. In addition to making sure that the program is, the digital program is functioning exactly how we need it to, um, they're also going to look at reintroducing, uh, dedicated medical buses. So, as Councilwoman Toy mentioned, a lot of the concerns we had from residents were specifically about getting to doctor's appointments on time. In the past, there have been buses that were simply for doctor's appointments, um, and they're going to explore, um, using that as well. Um, and again, I, uh, think it's great that there's this new program that expands usage, that it's being utilized in that way. Um, one of the other, uh, concerns, um, or comments, I would say, that was brought up was service hours, um, which are limited from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. versus some of our neighboring communities who have similar micro-transit systems that operate until 11:00 p.m., you know, so folks who work in the evening or have errands to run, um, later in the day can still utilize that service. So it's just something that the Housing Department slash Transit Unit is inside the Housing Department, um, is aware of and is looking at. And I think it's important for residents to just know what options are available here in our community.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right, great readouts, great presentation. Uh, we're going to move on to item number 18, which is a capo- this is a, a meeting, meetings of our committees. So this is, the number 18 is our Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee, uh, the meeting that took place on September 11th, and the subject matter of solid waste and recycling contract. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. Um, on Wednesday, September 11th, uh, after a number of members of the council and the mayor's office, we were attending a 9/11 ceremonial event. We came back over to City Hall at 7:33 p.m. The meeting, uh, convened on the matter of subject, uh, um, uh, waste. Uh, there it is, solid waste and recycling. That was the subject matter. Uh, myself, uh, my vice chairman, Jim Jolly, and the member of the committee, Kerry Bazinski, were there, as well as our council president, Mr. McCullough, Scott Morgan, and Laura Toy. The mayor was there, her chief of staff, our city attorney, Carter Fisher, uh, the finance director, the director of Public Works, Mr. Don Roroff, and his assistant, Doug Moore, were there, and Rob Jezwicki, our government affairs director. Also, uh, members from Priority Waste, Mr. Carl Magno, were in attendance as well. That meeting convened at 7:33 p.m. Administration started the meeting off with a recap and explanation of how we've come to this point. Briefly, this is our trash contract, and, uh, we've been with GFL for a number of years now. And that me, that, uh, contract is, is expiring November 30th of this year. As many of you in the audience know, GFL was acquired, the municipal division was bought by Priority Waste, roughly 74 communities. There are a few other trash haulers in the region. Earlier this year, the city went out for a public bid, and we notify all of the trash contractors in the area that the city of Livonia is going to get a new contract. Uh, of those four bidders, only two bid, ironically, GFL, which was our provider at the time, and Priority Waste. Waste Management did not bid, and there was another bidder that was not eligible to bid on the contract. So, long story short, we ended up here where we are today with Priority Waste being the only trash contractor really, um, looking at doing this. Uh, Waste Management has recently expressed interest in potentially, uh, bidding as well. The DPW Director, Don Roroff, gave multiple updates on ongoing discussions with representatives from Priority Waste. Uh, Priority Waste is willing to amend their contract, uh, to carts plus five, in addition to other terms in the contract, including Priority Waste managing the carts with the city storing the carts inventory on our property. We are talking about transitioning from your traditional trash cans that you purchase yourself to carts, those 95-gallon carts that, um, that you'd store your trash in, and then transitioning to recycling carts as well. Uh, City Council, after a lot of discussion back and forth, felt comfortable with transitioning to 95-gallon recycling carts. So if you think of, uh, uh, traditional shopping, a traditional trash cart, they hold maybe 30 gallons or so, the carts we're talking about would go, uh, would be 95-gallon, uh, carts. So they are substantially bigger, they have wheels, they have a lid, and the idea is that that would minimize rodents, minimize litter, and I think Livonia and maybe one other community still have traditional carts. Uh, just about every other community in the area has tradi- transitioned to those, uh, larger carts. So that was basically how we got to this point. Long story short, I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but, uh, we were hoping for unlimited pickup plus the carts, uh, and after some further discussions, that will now be carts plus five items. There's no limitation on those items. Can be a mattress, can be, um, a refrigerator, uh, furniture, any kind of normal furniture that you would, you would have, household furniture. Now, if you're running a business out of your house and you're putting 10 hot water tanks out in the side of your curb every, every day for trash pickup, then that's, that's not going to be permitted. Uh, but this is meant, intended to pick up normal household furniture. So if you have four or five bags next to your cart, uh, the trash contractor, Priority Waste, has said that they would, uh, pick those up. In addition to that, we would be storing the carts. The city of Livonia is proposing to purchase those carts, so we don't have, uh, different logos on there. They'd be our carts. We'd purchase them from our fund, and we would store those carts at DPW headquarters, uh, a certain amount of inventory. But then when your cart breaks, if a resident says, "My wheel popped off," or the, the lid flew off, or some other sort of damage, you would contact Priority Waste, and they would handle the day-to-day operations of maintaining those carts and making sure that they get to you, the resident. There were a lot of questions from members of the City Council to our DPW Director and Priority Waste Representatives and City Law Department officials, so there was a lot of back and forth, all sorts of questions. And if any of my colleagues want to talk about those questions and bring those out to light, they can. But there was a lot of good back and forth dialogue there. Uh, there are numerous contractual legal protections in place for the city's benefit. Uh, we discussed bonds, penalties, and other specific legal questions. As you may have seen, there's been, uh, stories in the media, so naturally residents want to know what protections we have as, as a city in the event that Priority Waste does not perform. Uh, Priority Waste Representatives are, uh, we're very fortunate in Livonia. It may not be well-known, but the representatives that we have live right here in Livonia. And as all members of council can attest, we get complaints for various things, and one of them may be trash. And I personally have, and I know every member of council has, and the mayor's office has reached out to those representatives. And it's nice to be able to reach out to a person that you know, not that lives in the city, but picks up their phone. It's not some 1-800 number, uh, that is on a call, uh, center in, in, you know, I don't know, Georgia, thousands of miles away. They, uh, they pick up the phone and they answer those calls right away. So we're lucky, and that is such a critical thing that we are getting with Priority Waste, to have those representatives that are Livonia residents. Uh, it's a father-and-son team. I think the son probably wakes up earlier now than dad. He works a little bit harder, but they're still out there, and they're working hard all the time, and, and they're on the, on the job. I've seen them driving around in residential roads at 7:00 in the morning, making sure stuff's getting picked up. So that's a huge benefit to our community. Uh, we did discuss the possibility of going back out to the market and negotiating with Waste Management, um, as a potential waste contractor, and there was a lot of back and forth discussion there. Ultimately, uh, Priority Waste Representatives reassured the City Council that they will provide the best service to our residents. The city would transition to the automated carts, 95 gallons for trash and 95 gallons for recycling, plus those five additional items for trash. It does not affect, um, yard waste and those sorts of things. You can still put out all your yard waste. That would not be included in those five additional trash items. Uh, there are not necessary limits on the items, again, uh, whether it be additional garbage bags, a mattress, bicycles, and other normal household trash you typically see. Priority Waste needs to place limitations on the number of those items as there are people who may take advantage of the waste system and use it for commercial activities, evictions, move-outs, and other business enterprises. Uh, they will continue to pick up yard waste like normal, and the city disposal site, which is on Glendale, will continue to operate like normal for our residents to bring truckloads or, or carloads of, of, uh, trash, and there is a fixed fee for that. So that's something nice we have in the city of Livonia. Now, a lot of people know there is a, um, there is a disposal site that we have in Livonia that you as a resident can pay X amount of dollars. I want to say it's $15, $16, and you can bring just about anything, truckloads of it. The next steps for the City Council would be to, uh, approve two motions, one to purchase a cart, and a separate motion would be to approve, uh, the purchase of carts, and the other would be to approve the solid waste and recycling contract. That meeting adjourned at 9:02 p.m. I'd like to note that there is a representative from the, uh, cart, uh, provider from Toder. Um, they, I think she came here, this is the second time she's come here, maybe from Tennessee somewhere, so thanks for making that drive out here. There are two resolutions. Resolution A would approve the contract with Priority Waste LLC for five years, utilizing 95-gallon trash and 95-gallon recycling carts. And then Resolution B would be to authorize the purchase of 40,000 trash carts and 40,000 recycling carts from Toder.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Toy?
If I may, um, Rob did an excellent job of recapping all that meeting because that was a long meeting, and kudos to Rob. But Rob, um, perhaps, if I may speak to him, um, we might want to say that this is no cost to our residents. I, I don't know. If you said that, and I missed it, but...
No, great point, Councilwoman Toy. Councilwoman Toy's, uh, done this a few times. She's handled a few of these different trash contracts over the years. There's a ton of information here, and, and trying to be transparent, but also not trying to talk all night long, um, there's a lot of other meetings that we've participated, and there's all sorts of packets online that is available to the community, that you can see the specific numbers. Uh, we were able to broker a deal that we would purchase the shopping carts at no additional cost to the residents, and to Councilwoman Toy's point, we are not increasing the tax millage. I would not be in support of increasing that tax millage. There's roughly about $8 million in that fund right now. We're going to take $4 million of that fund to purchase those, uh, 80,000 carts, 40,000 trash, 40,000 recycling. So we will not be increasing taxes to our resident. Uh, actually, we don't charge half of a mil on our trash, uh, millage. So we could, we could, in fairness, increase or charge that half-millage rate, and we do not at this point. And, uh, Finance Director in the mayor's office has indicated to me that they did not intend to ask for that, and they have not to this point. So we are not increasing taxes on residents at all. We are purchasing shopping carts with, with our budgeted funds, and then the, the, uh, price per pickup is going to go up, but it was not as much as some of the other bids. GFL was actually higher than Priority Waste, so we are still saving money. And by us purchasing the carts, replying for some grants, we're going to get a return on those dollars quite, uh, pretty, pretty quickly, actually. I think within five years, we're going to be able to repay those carts. Don't quote me on that exact number, but there is some significant financial advantages to transitioning to carts as opposed to tra- staying with traditional, um, uh, tradishunk, uh, garbage cans. We'd be spending more if we stay with traditional garbage cans. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilman Jolly.
Well, first off, thank you to Mr. Donovan. That's, y- y- you have been providing very thorough report outs from the committee, and the, particularly on this important, uh, subject. Um, I think one of the things that we need to say here is, we are going to the carts, and this is obviously the first time that we've done that. There are primarily two reasons that we're doing that. And, and they're kind of all flowed together. They funnel together into a, a single reason. There's a difficult time finding a reliable, steady workforce to man the trucks with the traditional way that we've been doing this. It's, people are not willing to work in the same ways that they were working in the past. Jobs that were really dignified, well-paying jobs in the past that allowed people to build a career and a life, sometimes people aren't interested in going down that particular route, particularly in something with, uh, trash hauling, right? Um, secondly, it would be significantly, as Mr. Donovan said, significantly more money for us to go down that route. But again, it would be less reliable because we would have less people potentially available to do that. And then, Ms. Toy, I don't want to, I don't want to take the credit for this, but I'll say it.
Go ahead.
Um, there will be a lot of communication coming from the mayor's office and the communi- There will be a lot of communication coming from the mayor's office and the communication team here at City Hall, because there will be a spectrum of choice for residents in regards to, Mr. Donavich said that, yes, we chose the 96 gallon carts as the fallback default option, but for people who think that that might be too big for them, you will have the option to have a 64 gallon cart. I'm not going to provide details, there is a communication plan in place that the administration, the mayor's office will be rolling out, and you will all be apprised of that if we vote to pass this contract, which I, I believe we will. So I want to give just really quick kudos to Mr. Donavich, Ms. Budzinski, to my rest of the council colleagues here, but the mayor's office as well, Don Roraf, the Care Magno's, always been partners for the city, and we appreciate that this relationship's going to be going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toy.
Mr. Chair, do you need a motion? Did you want to make that motion, since you're the chair?
Mr. President, I think that Councilwoman Toy has voted on like four or five of these contracts over her time in service, so maybe you should be the one to offer the motion for Resolution, Resolution A would be a contract to approve a contract with Priority Waste for five years for utilizing 95 gallon trash and 95 gallon recycling carts.
Yeah, so moved.
So we have, wait, so...
I made the motion.
Motion, Toy is a support. Counsel, any comments on this motion?
I'll go to Councilman Donavich.
I would just like to say, thanks to the administration and Don Roraf and, and your assistance, and then the mayor's office, we worked really hard on this, the law departments worked really hard on this, there's a lot of back and forth with contractual language, making sure that we're getting the best job and, and best deal for our residents. So thanks to my colleagues on council, we've spent a lot of time on this, and ironically, I was talking to some of our past council members, when this came up back in 2017, I think maybe it was the last contract that was negotiated, I think the auditorium was full of people that were really up in arms about the trash contract, and I think that's why it was so important for us as colleagues to really be transparent about the contract and try and get all the numbers out there, and the packets out there, and the administration, and our, our communications team has done a really phenomenal job on putting together slides, and Finance has done a great job in putting together the slides, information that's easy for us to digest, because there's huge numbers, and it's kind of hard to wrap your mind around it, so I think there was a big importance of the administration and the council to be transparent about this process and try to get as much information out to the residents as possible, so, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? Councilwoman Budzinski.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, state that this is a change, this is different, and it's kind of a change that's being put on us due to market forces, and, and what Councilman Jolly explained about finding people to do this work, and, and Councilman Donavich mentioned, to begin with, that we didn't really have an abundance of bids to even consider, and at the end of the day, we really were left with one. I do have confidence in the Carmangios and their service to Livonia, and that we'll continue to have the same service that we've received under this contract. I know from when this was originally presented to us, following our latest committee meeting, the changes that we asked for were included with the contract, for instance, well, I won't necessarily go into all of it, but I was glad to see that the changes that council wanted were in the new agreement. I know, one of the things that a lot of people are going to ask is say, but I have more bulk items, or I have more trash, you know, I have a large family, you can, and hopefully the mayor can confirm this, have more than one bin. If you need two trash bins or two recycle bins, you can have that, and there will be a communication plan from the administration, so that residents fully understand what these changes look like, and how we'll transition as a community. And again, to what was mentioned earlier, for residents who have concerns, bring them to us, and that we will all work together to make sure that they're addressed. I don't expect that there will be problems, but again, change can be scary, and I just want residents to know that council and the administration are prepared to do everything we can to make this a smooth continuation of service here in Livonia.
Thank you. Anything from council before I go to the mayor? Mayor, the floor's yours. Good evening.
Thank you, good evening, and good evening to all of you. I really want to take just a moment and thank you all for your close work and your partnership in coming together around this agreement. You have all expressed in some way, shape, or form the transition and the change, and just the difficulty that this may bring to a community because of the simple act of change. But I think you've also embraced the fact that with this change, there are going to become some really exciting opportunities for us. Councilwoman Toy was here when we first began our recycling program in the city of Livonia. That program has not changed since the day she first introduced it. Today will mark a significant change in the amount of recycling material that these cans can hold, and probably as a result, add more opportunity for people to recycle, to think about recycling. A lot of times, what providers find when communities move to a new system like this is things that used to be tossed into the trash can, simply because there was room for it. Suddenly, there's room in a larger recycling container, and you begin to think about what you can do to make this planet a better place. So I think there's some really exciting things coming our way, and I'm glad that you're all here with all of us to embrace that change. Additionally, some of the things that you have wisely negotiated into this contract, and I think that it bears mentioning, is our ability to take a look on a monthly basis on our, at our consumer practices. Part of what's in that contract is a monthly report that comes to us from Priority that is going to tell us, how much are we seeing in recycling versus how much are we seeing in solid waste distribution and putting in the solid waste containers. Over the course of time, that's going to help us even better manage this contract moving forward. There are communities that change their patterns of operation as a result of looking at data like that. This will now allow us to take a much bigger view of how we're managing trash in our community. So all of these elements have been negotiated in this contract, and I, I want to commend all of you for thinking, and all of that forward thinking that goes along with this. We are committed, along with all of you, to making this as smooth and seamless a transition as we possibly can, so, as with everything, there is a website that's been designed. Let's Roll Livonia is our new motto. Let'srolllivonia.org will roll out tomorrow, we'll be launching that, so people get some basic understanding about some of the frequently asked questions that they have. We've already developed a one-page list of questions that we know that folks are going to have, because we've been out talking to people, we've been out asking people, you know, what, what are going to be the first things that are on your mind? One of the things that people are going to want to know is exactly how much can you get in a 96 gallon container? These are big, and you have all seen them, they will, on average, hold 14 gallon trash bags, your kitchen gallon trash bags. So that is going to be a fantastic change, too. There's just going to be more that's been able to put in there, and part of what we think that that's going to do is that really is literally going to keep our city cleaner. As we struggle, and our inspection department struggles with road and problem, all communities are struggling with this, this is one way of tamping down that problem. We're going to have less bags that are, no bags, hopefully, that are sitting on the streets, everything's going into a bin with a lid that shuts down tightly and keeps it in there, and that reduces in communities the road infestation. So we're going to be able to see that happen in our community as well. So again, I applaud you for working with us, we really look forward to being back before you again, letting you know more about this rollout as it progresses. We lost a couple weeks of time here, as we waited for the final terms of this contract to be negotiated, but I think in the end, it's going to provide us with an even better contract. So thank you once again, and we'll be back in touch as we Let's Roll Livonia.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan.
Yes, Mayor, just one quick question, I just want some clarification, isn't there only going to be one trash can allowed for the 96 gallon per resident, and then we'll have the recycling bin, is that correct?
So residents will be given one trash can and one recycling bin at, at their choice by the city, but residents will have the option to buy additional if they have a large family, they know they produce more than can be held in one trash can a week, and, and any, we've been assured by Priority that any additional trash can would also be picked up from their house as well.
Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify that, because that was a little confusing earlier, so thank you.
Councilwoman Budzinski.
And to follow up on that, would that be counted as a separate bulk item, or would it be counted as a bin?
No, it would not qualify as one of the five bulk items, any bin would be picked up by itself.
Councilwoman Toy.
And if I may, Mayor, some people will say, ooh, that 96 gallon trash can, that's big, and you know, some people, you know, have one or two people in their homes, but the beauty of it is, you, because that lid fits tightly, and because of, as you've pointed out, several things, and the way these are made, these are going to be excellent, and that way, you don't have to stick out your trash every single week possibly, and those data kinds of issues that you're referring to, we'll be able to track some of that, so that maybe we don't have to stop as often, possibly, you know, there's all kinds of venues of that, and also the footprints of that cart, from what I understand, aren't any bigger or larger, if you will, than some of the carts we use right now.
So we did look at the footprint, and it is roughly the same as a 64 gallon container that we currently have, some residents have gone ahead and already purchased them, they're taller, though. You know, it's not like they're magic, just can't keep shoving stuff in, it's going to accommodate it, but they, they are taller, so they, you know, they'll look like they're larger in your garage, or next to your house.
Sure, thank you, thank you for all your work.
Council President.
Floor's yours.
Mayor, thanks for everything you and your team have done, can you just clarify, I know there's been a lot of discussion, you and Councilman Jim Jolly, your favorite color's pink, the carts are not going to be pink, correct?
The carts will not be pink.
I know that's his favorite color, so...
They, they will not be pink, and you and Councilman Jolly specifically asked that they be very classy, so they will be typical Livonia classy and classic.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Budzinski.
Yeah, I have another question, kind of a tie-in to our resident public comments tonight, and, and comments I've received before, and, and talking about the height, and residents who are concerned that it won't be, they won't be able to hide their garbage bins from the street, and how our ordinance department would then go about enforcing that. Has the administration thought about the consequences of the larger bins in keeping them, you know, if somebody has to keep them from the side of their house, they're larger, they're going to be more visible, what is the plan there?
So we wanted to be as comprehensive about this as possible, and recognizing that we were going to have larger trash receptacles, we took a look at our ordinance, and we really found that there was no need for council to amend the ordinance to accommodate the larger containers, so, again, I'll turn to the city attorney, and Carter had a chance, Mr. Fisher had a chance to take a look specifically at all of the details, and he can fill you in.
Sure, so our ordinance doesn't mandate currently that trash, that the trash carts be kept in a garage, or, or even necessarily behind the house, as long as they're not, you know, in front of the house and totally visible from the street, that's really all we require, so, we don't, we don't anticipate that this will have a big impact on that or ordinance enforcement, and, and we certainly wouldn't ask ordinance enforcement to go and ticket people accordingly, so...
Thank you.
Cool, anything further, counsel? Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go to the audience, if the audience has any communication on this item, please come up. And name and address, and you get two minutes.
Thank you. Stacy Newton, 15450 Oporto, this is the first time I've heard about the new carts, I'm pretty happy, even, you know, it's the subject of garbage, but a couple of years ago, several years ago, I filled out the survey about the future of Livonia, and I was recommending at that time to make recycling easier, clearly this is doing that. When you make something easier, people are more likely to do it, and when you put recycling in a rolling cart, that's fabulous, that makes it very easy, and a bigger cart is available. Also, the option to have a smaller cart for those of us who don't produce as much garbage is a wonderful idea, so I just want to commend you for moving in this direction.
We appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew this would be a happy day for you, come on up.
This is a very happy day for me. Jim Baringhouse, Greenleaf Commission, I just want to take the opportunity to say this is a very big night for the city of Livonia and for recycling, as the mayor indicated. We have a very long distinguished history in recycling, our program has actually been, received awards from the state of Michigan itself. Tonight, the city did a very big thing, it removed the biggest obstacle to recycling in Livonia, and that was the 24 gallon orange recycling bin, which is terrific. Last, the residents are more than ready for this, last year, the Greenleaf Commission did a survey on recycling practices in the city, we asked the question to the participants if they would be willing to have a larger recycling cart provided to them at no cost, at what, as, just as was discussed tonight, 85% of the respondents said yes. So this is very exciting, the residents are more than ready to receive these carts, and the Greenleaf Commission looks forward to working with residents and the city on a successful launch of this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baringhouse. Mr. Martin.
I'm going to be the lone wolf here, Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. I've watched these contracts over the years be discussed, watched a, a lot of audience participation. Years ago, they didn't want the 64 gallon, they made it pretty clear, that's why we didn't go that way, now all of a sudden, they're going to be 96, okay? I believe over the years, there's been a lot of collusion, we have four garbage companies, and it's ironic, it's just a stroke of luck, I guess, but Sam has worked for Waste Management, Rizzo, Green for Life, and now he's with Priority Waste. Some of these companies don't bid against each other, seems to be a, it's almost like the fix is in, okay? Now you guys are, got to do something, because time's running out, we only have really one valid contractor, okay? And, so now what are you going to do, okay? But I'm not in favor of the large carts whatsoever, because the majority of the people were not that took the time to come in here over numerous years and talk about these contracts, okay? And then Joe Blow buys out this guy, and this guy gets bought out by that guy, and all of a sudden, here we are, okay? And another thing, too, they're renting garbage trucks, that's what they're doing. Other cities tapped into the performance bond that this company has put up, because the service was so lousy, okay? I don't know what our performance bond is for Livonia that they've put up, have we tapped into that, or does someone think that everything is just running smooth, okay? Because I've seen garbage trucks just going, have I exceeded my...
You just hit your time.
Oh.
I appreciate that.
I saw it, Jim, you was kind of pointing a, pointing a finger at me there, I didn't...
As always, it's a pleasure, thank you.
Okay.
Any more further audience communications? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on our first item?
Resolution A.
Resolution A.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the item passes, 7 to 0.
Mr. President.
Councilman Donavich.
I'd like to offer Resolution B, which would authorize the purchase of 40,000 trash carts and 40,000 recycling carts from Toder.
Support.
I'll give it to Toy. Floor's yours.
Thanks, Mr. President, this is the company that we will be purchasing the carts from, again, to reiterate, we talked about earlier, the city would own the carts, we would purchase those through our fund, and they would not be owned by the contractor, so then in the future, if we ever change contractors, we could still keep those. We're going to own them, store them in our, at our yard, but the trash hauler is going to do the day-to-day operations, and, and just, I mean, I know, I might have a question, I know the representative from Toder's here, maybe give her an opportunity to come up here and answer a few questions, since she's flown out here twice now, I think. Is it North Carolina?
We can ask.
We can ask.
I remembered.
There you go.
Access is very similar. Hi, good evening, I'm Laura Hubbard, I'm Director of Municipal Sales for Toder.
Well, thank you, it means a lot that you'd make the trek out here twice, can you give us a little understanding of the carts? I know people have asked me this question, and councilmembers asked about durability, are they going to be able to stand up to our harsh winters, we're a lot colder than North Carolina with the snow, and if they get beat up by cars, or the big trucks beat them around, can you kind of shed some light on the durability of them?
Oh, most definitely, so, our process to manufacture our carts is a little bit different than all the other carts in the market. We do rotation molded bodies, which are known to be flexible and durable so that when that automated arm is taking up that cart once a week and squeezing it and grabbing it and putting it in that gallon full of trash or recyclables, it's going to withstand that, that kind of treatment every single week, 52 weeks out of the year. We are actually really well-known for harsh climates because of the process and materials that we use and we know that we can withstand, obviously very different than North Carolina, but we sell carts all over the U.S. and even into Canada and I know that they can withstand the harsh weathers here.
Thank you, Ms.
Anything else from council?
Real quick.
Yeah.
Not to be funny, but are they made out of recycled material?
Yes, but part of that will be, I know that's part of the grant that the department is working on. There are certain requirements that the recycled carts be made from a very specific recycled material, but we also use what we call standard post-consumer recycled material as well as PIRs on our carts.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, probably. Vice President?
Thank you. One of the questions I get a lot from residents about going to the carts are not only the durability, but the warranty behind them. So maybe you could just speak to that.
So our carts, our cart bodies have a 12-year warranty on the cart body because it is rotation molded and we believe that it is a longer-lasting product. So back in 2016, we extended our warranty from 10 years, which is the industry standard, to 12 years. All the other components on our cart is our 10 years.
All right. Thank you. That seems like that's pretty.
Yeah. Councilwoman Bozinski.
You mentioned a grant that the city is going for. I don't know if somebody from the administration could talk about that. I think residents always like to see how we're trying to save money.
Hi. So we are working with the Recycling Partnership, which is a nonprofit organization that can provide up to $15 per recycling cart. We have submitted the initial application. We don't know at this time the amount of funding that will be available, but that initial one has been submitted to get into their rotation. So they were willing to let us put that in to get into the funding cycle even ahead of this action this evening. We will be monitoring for any other recycling grants that may be available on a competitive basis from Eagle, but that will come, the funding cycle for that is different. So that is underway.
Thank you. Yes.
A follow-up. So is the Recycling Partnership a nonprofit organization?
A nonprofit, yes.
A state organization? Okay. And so DPW applied for that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice President?
Thank you. Since we have our Director of Finance at the podium, we'll give you another minute. I just wanted to point out to the residents who are worried about the funding for this, that by going to the cart system, overstaying with the status quo system we have, we're actually going to save $4.7 million over the next five years. And maybe you could expand on that or maybe I let the genie out of the bottle, but.
And Councilmember Jolly really hit the nail on the head with that. The industry is moving to collection methods that are less labor-intensive.
Right.
That's where the carts come in. They can run the trucks with fewer bodies on the truck, so it helps with the hiring practices. If we did not move to the carts and we stayed with status quo, they would allow us to do that, but it would be a substantially higher cost per resident or per stop to accommodate that extra labor cost that would be involved. So Councilmember Donavich had mentioned that we would have a pretty quick return on investment. It's actually about four years that the carts will pay for themselves and we will actually be on the positive side of things. If we did not move to carts, I don't actually have a crystal ball, but I'm not sure that we could maintain the millage at the level it's at because the cost per stop would be substantially more. So this contract, while it is an increase per stop from what we're paying right now, it is a very cost-effective direction for us to move.
And so saving that money in, like you said, in four years will recoup basically, and it could even be quicker if we get the grants. So that's us being fiscally responsible with this contract.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilwoman Toy.
If I may, to our finance director, we, just a comment. We're so fortunate in this community because we don't pay for garbage. So many more communities that surround us, I was talking to a couple of friends over the week, and they have to pay for their garbage collection. Over and above. I just talked to a friend of mine down in Florida and she said, you know, I got to take in consideration now that I'm retired, that I'm paying for garbage and I'm paying for probably bug control and, you know, all those fun things. So we're real, we're real fortunate over the years that we've been able to keep that intact, I believe. And I think it's through your efforts and your team and Mayor and all of us that we were able to do that and Mr. Carmango, who does a terrific job for us. So thank you for your input. I know you're newer here, but I know you've been other places and I knew, I'm pretty sure you can attest to that, being a true statement.
Absolutely. Both on the finance side and as a resident, I've been in communities where, you know, we rebuild quarterly for it and the value that the city of Livonia gives to their residents for the small amount of millage that's collected for the solid waste and recycling is, it's substantial.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none. I'm going to go to the audience and the audience communications on the carts. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on item two, right?
Resolution B.
Resolution B. Thank you, Mr. Donavich.
Sir.
I was just testing you.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations, everybody. It's a big day. All right, let's move on. I think we're on to item number, unfinished business for item number 19, is a request for council approval on a proposed lot split. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment for the property located on the northeast corner of Schoolcraft and Richfield.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving.
Support.
I got Donavich and Tashnik. Council, any communication on this item? Mr. Donavich at the floor is yours.
Mr. President, it's pretty standard. It's corner lots over on Schoolcraft and I believe it's Richland. It's going to be two nice homes. They're actually, Richfield, excuse me, they're actually already parceled out when the original plots were created and now we're actually going to formally create two lots. They'll be two standard homes. I know the petitioner's here this evening and talked about adding trees along Schoolcraft on the southern portion and it's really a nice enhancement, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilman Jolly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I think what I'm most excited about for this is the lots as they are positioned now are on Schoolcraft Road and this moves them to a more residential perspective on Richfield, which I think is a great value added for the neighborhood and the homes themselves. So I commend that and I look forward to supporting it.
Cool. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You've got an approving. I'm going to go right to the clerk unless he wanted to say anything. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item number 20, is a request to establish a new classification. Comes to us from the Civil Service Department for the position of the Budget and Fiscal Services Manager. Council.
So moved.
Support.
I got Toy and with the motion, Bozinski with support. Councilwoman Toy, do you have anything that you would like to follow up on or are you just good with your motion?
I'm good with the motion. I think the position has been discussed. It sounds like it's going to be very helpful for our city as we move into the future and I think it will, I don't want to say that out loud, only because I think there's somebody you have your eye on, if you will, Finance Director within your department. So it's kind of, we're not going out and rehiring and hiring and, you know, creating a, it's basically a new job role and a new title is what it is. And I think it's very much needed. Other communities are doing this and as we vision our city into coming into the 2024, 25 and beyond, I won't be here, but all of you or most of you or actually, most of you won't be here. There's only going to be three of us left or three of you left. So I think, no, I mean, I mean, we're term limited is what I'm talking about.
It happened to us. I mean.
I didn't mean that anybody's going to be injured or anything. No, I'm sorry. You got it wrong. Sorry.
I'm nervous. I got to sage my house now.
I am only half Italian. So anyhow, that's why I think it's a, it's a great move for this city to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy, Vice President?
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. President, I think we could classify as last man standing. I don't know.
It's like Final Destination.
Seriously. I always hesitate to add staffing or grow government. I mean, that's, you know, that always gives me pause, but I agree that this is going to be a value add to our finance department. You know, my biggest concern always is how are we going to finance it? How are we going to pay for it? But it really does sound like it's going to end up kind of paying for itself, but I will be looking, of course, at the budget a little closer to see how we are going to finance this, but I will be in support tonight.
Cool. Thank you. Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I struggled with this a little bit. There's a lot of great questions from some of my colleagues on council. What was telling to me is a few different things. One, that this position is created to find waste and be more strategic with our budget. As a budget manager, they're going to look at the budget. There is, yes, roughly 16 people in the finance department and I actually had a really nice informational chart that our finance director sent me laying out all their responsibilities and duties. And it makes sense. 16 people sounds like a lot, but when you're operating a $100 million a year budget, there's a lot of money coming and going on a daily basis. And no one's really looking at the budget in the kind of way to look for that fat and be creative with it. But something that was telling to me that the finance director, there's already a position in our budget or in our administration. It's a finance, it's a budget director and that position will be paid a lot more and there's a lot more that goes with it. And I think it was fiscally responsible and strategic of our finance director rather than utilize that position. Create this position, it's a little bit less money, but it's accomplishing what her department needs to accomplish. So in terms of being fiscally responsible, I think that was very telling right there and I'm hoping that we can see in a year or so that this position paid dividends. There's a saying I like, I want government to do less of what it currently does, but what it does, I want it to do really good at. And I think that this position will accomplish that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. That concludes the regular agenda. Is there any audience communication for items not on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Please. Who's supporting that?
Support.
Everybody. I think I could safely show seven. Good night, Livonia. We'll be back in 10 minutes. 8:44, we'll say 8:55. Yeah.